The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a regular board meeting tonight, and we invite participation either remotely or in person. Directions on how to participate via Zoom are available at nvusd.org/board. The open session part of the meeting will begin at around 7:00 p.m. Public comment on closed session items. Before going into closed session, the board is available for public comment on closed session agenda items. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on closed session agenda items?
There is no public comment on closed session items.
Thank you. Seeing that there are none, the board will now adjourn into closed session. Good evening. My name is Cindy Water, and this is the Napa Valley Unified School District Board of Education. The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a regular board meeting tonight, and we invite participation either remotely or in person. Directions on how to participate via Zoom are available at nvusd.org/board. Interpretation in Spanish is available for tonight's virtual board meeting. Our interpreters are Francisco Mesa and Isidra Menkos. One of the interpreters will now translate the directions on our English channels so our Spanish-speaking families may hear the instructions. Can we please, whoops.
I'm sorry, we couldn't hear the announcement. Could you please repeat that? I think we might be having a little technical difficulty.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes.
No? Okay.
Let me try again. Yes, please go ahead. We could hear you. Go ahead.
I'm having some problems with my microphone, so I'm gonna do it with the microphone for now. La reunión de hoy va a tener traducción simultánea en español. Para acceder a la traducción simultánea, en breves momentos ustedes van a ver en la parte de abajo de su pantalla de Zoom un icono del globo terráqueo. Pueden hacer clic en ese icono y escoger el idioma Spanish o español. Si están en su teléfono móvil, van a ver tres puntitos que dicen more o más, y allí van a ver el icono del globo terráqueo cuando hagan clic, y pueden escoger Spanish o español. Gracias.
Thank you. Can we please start with an attendance roll call from Vera Morales, Executive Assistant?
Yes, Student Board Member McGrath.
Present.
Trustee Water.
Present.
Trustee Gracia.
Present.
Trustee Chu.
Present.
Trustee Jankowitz.
Present.
Trustee Hart.
Present.
Trustee Gonzales Marias.
Present.
Forum present. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for joining us tonight for our NVUSD Board meeting. First, we have a report on closed session. Trustee Chu, do you have a report on closed session agenda items?
Yes, I do. Item D2A Personnel. In closed session, the board took action to approve the following staff recommendation effective the 2024 to 2025 school year. On the motion by Trustee Gracia and second by Trustee Gonzales Marias, the board voted 6-0 to appoint James Dennis to the position of Principal at Donaldson Way Elementary School. The votes were Trustee Water, aye. Trustee Reiser was absent. I was an aye. Trustee Gracia was an aye. Trustee Jankowitz, aye. Trustee Hart, aye. And Trustee Gonzales Marias, aye. That concludes the closed session report.
Yes, and...
Thank you. So tonight, we do have Mr. James Dennis joining us in the audience. James, would you like to come up and address the board?
That would be helpful. Good evening, President Water and Board of Trustees, Assistant Superintendent Dana Page, and Cabinet members. First, I'd like to thank the board and the executive cabinet for the opportunity to lead the amazing school of Donaldson Way Elementary. Your support and confidence in me is not lost, and I will not let you down. I would also like to thank Dr. Ainsworth and the staff at Napa High School. Thank you for an incredible school year. From the beginning, you embraced me and made me feel like I was part of the Napa High School family. I want you to know that you hold a very special place in my heart. Thank you. I would also like to thank Jen Cole and the staff at Silverado Middle School for the five years of leadership experience. I would not be here today without those experiences and you. On the Donaldson Way website is the school's vision, which states, "Donaldson Way is a community that learns, cares, and supports each other. We cultivate well-adjusted, confident, and well-rounded 21st century learners while embracing, accepting, and understanding diversity of all needs. This vision speaks to my values as an educator. I am beyond excited to join the Donaldson Way team and become a dragon. I spent six years teaching in American Canyon, and I look forward to returning to serve the amazing AC community. I know I have big shoes to fill as the principal, but I will spend every day honoring the amazing work Principal Abalon has done for the past decade while helping usher Donaldson Way into the future. Thank you."
James, welcome to American Canyon.
Well said. Well said, Mr. Dennis, and don't move because I'd like you to do the pledge of allegiance.
Yes, ma'am. You just let me know when to start. All rise. Put our right hand over our hearts. Let's pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. And an announcement. This meeting is livestreamed and recorded via Zoom and will be archived on the district YouTube channel. For a detailed review of any meeting agenda item, the archived video can be referenced on the district's webpage at nvusd.org. The process for public comment can also be found on the district's webpage. So next, approval of agenda.
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Trustee Gracia and a second by Trustee Hart. All in favor? Oh. Trustee McGrath?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Oh, anyone opposed? Who would oppose that? This is a great agenda. I think this is the best one ever. I mean, really. All right. And next, we have approval of minutes. April 23rd, 2024.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. A motion by Trustee Gracia and a second by Trustee Jankowitz. Student Trustee McGrath?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. April 25th, 2024. I believe Trustee Hart was absent that time. So, all right. So I need a motion.
Move to approve.
A second?
Second.
A first by Trustee Gracia, a second by Trustee Chu, and Student Trustee McGrath?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
And one abstention. Thank you. Thanks for reminding me. Okay, great. And recognition of visitors and employee organizations. Do we have any visitors in attendance?
It does not appear that we have any of our labor reps in the audience here. Mr. Michaels, can you check the participants online to see if we have Hector Gallegos, Jennifer Khan, or Deb St. Clair?
We do not have any of them on this evening.
All right. No visitors then.
All right. And now, for the best part of the meeting, the recognition of Students of the Month. And we have both sets of students in person for a change. This is great. First, we have Napa High School's Principal Ainsworth. Please present the Students of the Month for Napa High School.
So good evening. Before I get going, I do want to give a big shout out and a thank you to Trustee Gracia for coming and hanging out with us this past Tuesday evening at our incoming freshman athletics block party. It was a blast just to hang out with him and with our students. Second of all, congrats to Mr. Dennis for his appointment tonight. He's been an amazing addition to Napa High, and we have to remind ourselves often that he's only been here this year because it feels like he's been there for several. That's how much he's just been deeply ingrained into the culture of our school. So he's been wonderful, and I wish him well in that. Our first student tonight is Giselle Infante. You're gonna find tonight, as you hear her speak, she's highly intelligent, she is kind, but she is one of the most driven, fearless learners you're gonna find. She is proof tonight that students that are high achieving, she has a 4.37 GPA, can thrive in a CTE environment, and she is the future of STEM and women in STEM. And I think will present herself as someone as why we need to push more women into STEM. She recently competed at the Skills USA Annual State Leadership Conference in Southern California, representing Napa High and Napa Valley Unified School District. And it is an honor to introduce you to Giselle Infante.
Thank you, Dr. Ainsworth, for introducing me. Good evening, everyone. My name is Giselle Infante, and here with me today are my parents, Patty and our son, Infante. And to begin, I'd like to thank the Board of Trustees for taking the time to honor me this evening. It's truly a privilege to be Student of the Month. I'm an alumni of Phillips Elementary School and Silverado Middle School, and I'm currently a junior here at Napa High. I'm grateful for the education that I've received and to all the teachers that have supported me along the way. Throughout my educational journey, I was given numerous amazing opportunities to pursue activities and experiences such as leadership, yearbook club, and band. My involvement in these extracurricular activities have helped me to learn to voice my opinions and collaborate with others. There are so many special teachers that I've encountered along the way, but I'd especially like to thank Ms. Bolding, my CTE Human Anatomy teacher. She took the initiative in signing up a group of students from my Human Anatomy class to compete in Skills USA. Skills USA is a workforce development organization for students and empowers them to become skilled professionals, career-ready learners, and responsible community members throughout academy programs and competition. I first competed in first aid and CPR category at the regional level here at Napa High in February. I then qualified for state in Ontario, California, and it was such an amazing eye-opening experience. I was able to meet new people, not only from other schools here in California, but also here in Napa High and throughout the Napa city. And now, I even call some of those students my friends. I also traveled on an airplane for the very first time. It was very exciting, and I cannot wait to fly again. Being in that environment, I felt so proud to be there. And it was, I was the first to represent my school, and it has motivated me to compete again next year and as well as inspire others to do the same. This experience, along with taking Miss B CTE classes, medical biology freshman year, and human anatomy this year, I've incited my interest in pursuing a career in the medical field. And this summer, I will be taking tours of four-year colleges with plans of applying in the fall. Lastly, I'd like to thank my parents and family for always encouraging me and supporting me in everything I do. They are my first cheerleaders. I am deeply grateful for their unconditional love and guidance being with me every step of the way. All in all, I am thankful for my education here at NVUSD, and thank you again for honoring me this evening. Thank you.
Our second Student of the Month is Liliana Gonzalez. She's also a junior at Napa High. She is an ESA student, yet another ESA student coming through our amazing program in Napa Valley Unified. She's a volleyball player, she's a basketball player, but most importantly, she's this amazing person with this incredible positive outlook on life. Whenever you see her on campus, it's almost always smiling and brightening someone else's day. She has an incredible story of resilience and strength, and I look forward to having her for a whole nother year next year. She's also going to be honored tomorrow night at the If Given a Chance Awards at Napa Valley College as a new recipient for this upcoming year. So with that, I would like to introduce you to Liliana Gonzalez.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for having me. My name is Liliana Gonzalez, and I'm a junior at Napa High. I would like to begin by expressing my gratitude to the board and Dr. Machetti as well. I am extremely honored for the recognition, and it means so much to me. Thank you all for acknowledging my efforts, and it is truly appreciated. I'd also like to thank my family, not only for being here tonight, but for always supporting me through everything. I'd especially like to thank my mom because regardless of the situation, she's always there supporting me, and she's always had my back, and she's always been a tremendous support system for me. And I wouldn't have been, I wouldn't be here without her love and support and encouragement. Over the course of my three years at Napa High, I have been fortunate enough to have had many great teachers who have inspired me to become the student I am today. However, it was the guidance and support of Mr. Aaron that has truly helped me to mold myself into the best version of myself. His dedication and passion for teaching has left an impact on me, and I am forever grateful for everything that he has done to help me succeed. He has also been a huge impact on helping me get into the, for the If Given a Chance scholarship. So I thank him a lot, and I'm very grateful for him. My experience with NVUSD has been extremely positive, and I am grateful for the education I have received. Growing up in Napa Valley, I've had the privilege to be a part of the ESA program. I've attended NVLA Harvest, and now I'm at Napa High. The ESA program has allowed me to continue learning about my cultural heritage and has played a huge role in my personal growth. I have also been fortunate enough to be a part of the athletic program at Napa High, which has not only helped me with improving my physical abilities, but also helped me build social skills and become a better leader. I will forever be grateful for the opportunities that these programs have presented to me, and I am determined to achieve my dream of becoming a neonatal intense care nurse, and I would love to attend San Diego State University. I am excited to pursue higher education, and I am eager to make my mark in the healthcare field. Thank you for allowing me to introduce myself, and I appreciate the recognition, and thank you so much for this amazing opportunity.
Thank you, Dr. Ainsworth, and congratulations to the Napa High students. And now, we have, from New Technology High School, will Principal Dev please present the Students of the Month for New Tech High School? And congratulations to you, Principal Dev, for your school getting an award last week in Southern California. Distinguished High School.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for joining us, actually. Good evening, NVUSD Board of Trustees, President Water. Congratulations on the Student of the Month winners at Napa High School. I'm Abinav Dev, Principal at New Technology High. The end of the school year is coming up quick for Penguin community, for our Penguin community. We've had a busy spring so far, attending the California Distinguished School Award at Disneyland last week with Trustee Jankowitz, President Water, Director Reddy, and Dr. Machetti. Prom night was a success last Saturday at Napa Rio. It was '80s themed. We unveiled our new logo and branding in late April at Open House, and our early college program is gearing up to start in the fall. I'm honored to be here tonight to celebrate two of our graduating Penguins. The New Tech High School Student of the Month for March is Lourdes Lopez. It's fall 2022, and we were revamping our school site council, and we needed a strong advocate for the New Tech community to step up and support our goals. Lourdes took on the chairperson role and has helped to meet our school plan by elevating student voice to the core of our work at New Tech. Lourdes has been a mentor for students, an optimistic voice for anyone who needs some encouragement, and a leader within our teacher, student, and parent community. When she's not organizing prom or making sure senior trip planning is running smoothly or supporting parents in the front office or serving the school in any capacity possible, she's just the senior class president. Lourdes is very intentional about her actions, especially when it comes to leaving a legacy for future Penguins to champion. Lourdes, your curiosity, love for reading, and general care and compassion for those around you is inspiring. I know you come from a family of Penguins, which has grown even larger over the last four years. As Mr. Biggs says, when you're in a pickle, let's ask Lourdes what she thinks. She usually has a solution. Your future is bright. We're gonna miss you. Congratulations on this recognition. Lourdes has prepared a statement to share with the board.
Good evening, and thank you, Mr. Dev. I want to say thank you all for taking the time to appreciate all the recipients tonight and for giving me this recognition. I'd like to thank you all for recognizing me once again. My brother was up here a couple of years ago, so I know how much I meant to my family back then and how much it means now. This is a position I would not have been in were it not for the people who surround me every single day. I want to start off by saying that my parents are very earnest people. They're serious and sincere. They are truly diligent and honest in all their labors and affairs, so I am firmly convinced that I have the honor to receive this award today because of my family and because they taught me what it meant to be genuine. However, I was also put on this path because of my siblings before me. They all decided to go to New Tech, so I was forced to go to New Tech. However, I would not have it any other way. New Tech is built on an impressive foundation of trust. On a basic level, you can rely on nobody stealing your stuff, and authentically, you can be comfortable yourself. It is the inclusivity of New Tech that helped me aspire for more. I would not be here if it were not for the community of staff and students at New Tech who support and build off of each other. It's not just my closest friends, it is every single person that makes every day brighter. I would not be here without the help of the administrators, Mr. Dev and Mr. Biggs, who worked tirelessly to connect with every student, meeting their needs personally and professionally. It could be a fist bump in the morning or a pep talk in the afternoon. It is a thriving community that encourages innovation and fuels bright visions. It forges a bridge for students to the future, and it is because of this environment I was given opportunities to create connections and be a leader. Consequently, every time I took on a new leadership role in a club or committee, my parents had 20 new meetings to drive me to, so it's them I'm very grateful for. As for my siblings, they were very supportive of me when I was working on a project till the very last minute of the deadline or when I just needed to have fun. So my family was always there for me night or day, or night and day. Quiero agradecerles a mis padres y a mi familia por mostrarme lo que significa la importancia de trabajar con esfuerzo. Gracias por creer en mí y por ser mi chofer todo el tiempo. Todo me ha ayudado a recibir este honor y ser la persona que soy hoy. Gracias. I want to wrap it up by saying I am very grateful to receive this honor. I couldn't have endured it without all the people who surround me for the last four years, and I know that whatever my future holds, I will see it through with the presence and advice of my peers, mentors, and family. Thank you.
The New Tech High Student of the Month for April is Victor Torres. Each Penguin will choose the path that's right for them, no stigma attached. Someone shared this sentiment with me recently. It really illustrates the journey Victor has been on. There were some challenging times for Victor during his first couple of years at New Tech. He always had so much energy and wasn't quite sure where to channel it all. With support and drive to meet his life goal of joining the Marines, Victor adjusted his path towards walking that stage at Memorial Stadium in a couple of weeks. Over the past year, Victor has completed multiple dual-enrolled college classes and is at the top of his class in his first aid and safety course. He's mentoring younger students now, guiding them on a path to success. Victor consistently puts the need of the school at the top of his priority list. Victor, you've built self-advocacy skills and have turned into a true leader on campus. So many different students confide in you. When they aren't having their best day, you play such an important role in supporting them. Congratulations on this achievement. And Victor's also prepared a statement to share with the board.
Good evening, everyone. Board of Directors, how are y'all doing today? That's good. I'm doing good. You know, big day for me. Got some things I'd like to say. Sorry, I'm not really good with speeches. It's my first time doing something like this. Good afternoon. My name is Victor Torres Garcia. I am the last child of my family and the last one to graduate. And I have the pleasure of being Student of the Month for not, oh, hold on. Okay. I am the last child of my family, the last one to graduate, and I have the pleasure of being Student of the Month for not only my last month of school or last month of this school year, but during my last year, my senior year. Thank you for this send-off. It really is great, you know? And to obviously be presenting myself in front of you all today, like I said, it is really nice. It's an honor. I don't know if you could tell, but I'm a little nervous. It has been a long journey at New Tech. I had a bit of a rough start due to COVID. I'm sure we all felt the effects of that. However, with the online learning, that set the foundation for what was to come and expect here. Now, from freshman year up until now, I've had a good experience at this school. The teachers and the staff were all great, as well as my classmates. And like Mr. Dev said, I do plan on enlisting in the Marines. That's it.
That's wonderful. Okay. Next, we have public comment on non-agenda items. Trustee Chu, did we receive any public comment on non-agenda items via email?
Yes, we did. I can't seem to find it right now. Can you take public comments? I know, I don't have a sheet. Can you get public comments from?
Do we have any public comments online?
We do not. There are no online public comments.
She hasn't announced. Okay. So I do, I do have public comments that were sent. Okay, so I do, I do have public comments that were sent via email at publiccomment@nvusd.org before 8:00 a.m. this morning. The written format has been forwarded and reviewed by the NVUSD Board of Trustees. We received an email with 15 letters. The topic was student letters about print books at Unidos Middle School, received on May 1st, 2024. And included were letters from Sarah Knutson, Jonah Espiro, Violet Brusella, Kennedy Ames, Abigail Gibson, Margot Donovan, Natalie Flores, Jackson Carson, Olivia Calice, Alejandro Lopez, Megaly Hernandez, Ari Knutson, Elisa Negrete, Alexander Medrano, Catherine Webb, and Bailey Warden. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I already asked. Do we have any online comments?
We do not, there are no online public comments.
Okay, thank you. And we have one comment from someone in our audience on a non-agenda item, and this is Greg Bonnell Ursi. I don't know if I can, if I'm...
You might have to correct that.
Yeah, I can't, I can't...
Bouyers, like bou-yah.
Oh, okay, it's a B-O-U, not an N. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Come on up.
Hello, everyone. My name is Greg Bouyers. I'm the Executive Director for the Boys and Girls Clubs in Napa Valley, and I just wanted to come tonight to bring you a message of thanks. So it's 2024, I started with the club here in Napa in 2020, which was a really easy time to take over a Boys and Girls Club. Think of the pandemic. About six months before then, our organization had enjoyed a longstanding relationship with NVUSD. Can you hear me all right? Okay. Pardon me. A longstanding relationship with NVUSD, serving around 1,800 kids, of whom about 1,200 would see us every single day. Since coming into Napa, working alongside the district staff and the support that we've gotten through ELOP funds and ACE's funds, and the growth of our programs, as of the close of 2023, over 6,000 kids had come through our doors. A former executive director for Boys and Girls of America had a famous quote that said, "We plant seeds for whose trees and which we will never sit," or "whose shade we will never sit." And I think that's relevant today because this work is often thankless. There's not enough thanks to go around for the beauty that happens within the walls of the club, but I recognize that probably even more so is the people who provide the tent. We show them magic every day. We give them art, we help them with homework, we read books with them, we build relationships of care. But you guys provide the forum through which we're able to accomplish this magic with them. And I wanted to come today to say thank you so much for continuing to be such a collaborative partner. Your staff in the form of Matt Manning, Pat Andrew Jennings, Rob Magualla, Dr. Masetti, have been incredible advocates. They hold us accountable when we need to be. We don't always get it right, we're not always on the same page, but I think we always approach it from a place of care. And that's, as long as we're able to get that right, that translates into great futures for everyone. So I wanted to thank you very much today, and thanks so much for having me.
Thank you. All right, and let me switch over here. Anyone else? Nope. Okay, now we're moving over to reports. Board of Education and Student Board Representative, Student Trustee?
Absolutely. Good evening, everyone. It's good to see you all again. At Napa High, Napa Valley College hosted an Exploration Day this past Thursday. This was a field trip opportunity to learn about Napa Valley College programs and the application process, and interact with staff and students. And we had a bus from Napa High to take students there. We also had our Napa High Dance Show and our Musical, which were both very successful. This upcoming weekend, we have our Napa High Car Show. I was unable to attend last year, so I'm excited to attend this Saturday at Napa High from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., if any of you guys want to stop by. At New Tech High School, their ASP elections are completed, and now the elected students are in preparation and training for their new positions. They had prom last week and currently are preparing their senior breakfast, senior signing, senior sweatshirts, and senior tie-dye to celebrate the achievements of their students. They had a spirit week two weeks ago to celebrate Earth Day and encourage climate action. And as they don't have regular finals, they're getting ready for their Defensive Learning, which is a presentation among peers and staff, where they present what they have learned in the year and how it has contributed to their learning outcomes. At Vintage High School, right now their seniors are working on senior sunset planning, as well as some final graduation details. They recently had Plaza Vintage Week, which is a spirit, which is a spirit week to celebrate all the different communities within their school, which started with a club day and ended with a talent rally. Their freshmen have been mainly working on fundraising to help a classmate that was in an accident. ASP elections have happened, and they've had their E-board and class officers all figured out and are starting the transition to them being in charge for next year. At American Canyon High School, prom was this past Saturday, so they've been working on what went well and what can be improved for next year. And they too have also completed their ASP and class officer elections. Teacher Appreciation Week is underway, and they have dedicated this entire week to celebrating their teachers. They're currently planning their Legacy Rally, which is their final rally of the year, where seniors will be celebrated and leading staff will be honored. Current ASP has also been working on the graduation speeches, and they're making effort to ensure that the event is very student-centered. Across all high schools, we are in the midst of AP testing for those who have AP classes, so I want to congratulate all the AP students on their hard work throughout the year. Finally, I would like to end my board report with a little personal announcement. Last week, I committed to UCLA to study business economics, so that's where I'll be headed to in the fall, and I'm excited for that. And with that, I conclude my report.
Well, I remember my admissions letter from a long time ago now, but congratulations. We're super excited for you. It's always part of our journey as Board of Trustees to follow that path of, from applications to everything when you, when you finally make a decision, so we're very proud of you. That being said, I continued my journey of visiting TK classrooms. So this week I had the pleasure to visit two elementary schools. I started off with Fearsen Elementary School with Principal Knox. I just want to thank him for the walk through the campus. I had not been there in a while, actually, I've kind of realized that, but I've been there for community events and so on, but to come in there with the capacity of wearing my Board of Trustee hat as we visit the classrooms, the space, just seeing the facility needs from the equipment to bathrooms and so on, and just continues to be helpful for not only hear that, but actually be in the space and understand the dynamics of that. I also want to thank Principal Osborne over at Browns Valley. He's in the room today, and just had a really, a completely different perspective there because that's a TK through eight, so a different dynamic, but equally just kind of zoning in into the TK classrooms. Once again, the space, the facilities, the bathroom, the staff. I just really appreciate, again, having them take time away from their very busy, very busy day to just help me understand, so I can continue to try my best to sit at this seat right here that I have, and my ability to be able to vote accordingly or voice something accordingly. So I just appreciate that time spent in the campuses and with the principals, so thank you. And that was my report. Thank you.
All right. So first off, I'd like to acknowledge that we're celebrating this week our Staff Appreciation Week, and that is a week that we choose to celebrate all of our staff that makes it possible for us to educate our children, including our classified staff, our administrators, and teachers. So thank you to everyone that's in the room and everyone listening online for everything you do. You are very much appreciated, not just this week, but always, but especially this week. Going back to April, since I was not at the last meeting, I'm gonna just recap real briefly. In the beginning of April, I was able to visit Washington, DC as part of the California School Board Association's Coast to Coast Program. There, our delegation was able to meet with our Congressman Mike Thompson, and we were able to advocate for several specific items, one of which, the one that I spoke to, was to encourage Congress to cover the full promise funding of 40% cost for the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, referred to as IDEA. IDEA is a law that makes available a free, appropriate public education to children with disabilities throughout the nation and ensures that special education and related services are available to those children. Congressman Thompson has a stellar record of supporting education and indicated that he will continue to do so. He believes that the federal government can solve many of the issues we face in education today by fully funding 40% of the special education costs as originally promised nearly 50 years ago. We thank Congressman Thompson for his commitment to educational funding and share his hope that we will be fully funded one day in the near future. Moving on from that, on April 17th, I attended the American Canyon High School Community Meeting. On the 19th, I was able to tour along with Trustee Gonzalez Marais, the Stonebridge Charter School, which was very interesting and informative. I had not been there before. On April 20th, I celebrated Dia del Niño at Pueblo Vista with my daughter, who attends there. April 23rd, we had a special board meeting. On May 1st, I was back at Pueblo Vista seeing the fourth grade Pollinator Showcase, which I know some of my fellow trustees have seen before. This year, they did hummingbirds, it was really cute. They made some cool little drawings and had PowerPoint presentations. They presented in tandem, so they had one on their side and one on our side, and they managed to work through all the technical presentation of that at 10 years old, so I thought that was pretty cool. Later on that same day, I was able to attend at Vintage High School the Senior Signing Day with my son Lance, who I told him I'm running out of opportunities to embarrass him in public since he's graduating this year, so I wanted to acknowledge that he's here tonight as part of his AP Government Class observing, so I'll try to not embarrass him too much more than that, but I'm sure he's already pretty red back there. May 3rd was a busy day for me. I in the morning attended the coffee with the principal at Pueblo Vista, and then afterwards went over to McFearsen and met with Principal Knox, and was able to tour that location. I had actually never been on that campus, even though I was born and raised here in Napa, but never had the opportunity, and that was great to get to see some of the great things that he has going on there and the ton of opportunity we have for that particular location. After that, I went over to Phillips and met with Principal Jones and was able to tour Phillips and also see some of the really interesting things that they have going there. One of the things that I recall specifically is we have a program to reclassify our multilanguage learners when they become proficient in English. And one of the things that she shared with me that they do at Phillips is they identify kids that are right on the cusp of being able to make that transition, and she actually had little flashcards that she takes with her to the classroom so that she can say and know, okay, these are the three kids that we're working on specifically to get them to the point of reclassification, and they make special effort to get those kids across the line. I thought that was really cool. So that was something I learned there. May 6th this week, at American Canyon High School again, with News, Napa District Attorney, and Napa PD, there was a presentation and a resource fair about protecting our children from sexual predators. And then last night, we had a special board meeting here with the end-of-year superintendent evaluation. And that concludes my report.
Good evening. It is Employee Appreciation Week. This is, this week is a time to celebrate and recognize our employees for their tireless work and dedication put forth for our students. A career in education is a choice, but the complexity of all the jobs are more than just a career choice. It is a choice to teach the next generation what is possible, what opportunities lie before them, and the skills and understanding to attain their goals. It is not easy to articulate the enormity of the gratitude we as a community and as individuals feel for all of our NVUSD employees. Thank you for choosing this profession. Thank you for all the work you do. Thank you for molding the future through your work with our youth. And to every employee, you are critical change agents in the trajectory of a child, and we appreciate you very much. I continue to have the privilege of interfacing with our community. I had many, many one-on-ones over the last two weeks. I had the opportunity to meet with a multitude of community members and groups that are lobbying the city to assist in developing a sports complex in Napa. I had the privilege of attending, along with President Water and Dr. Masetti, the Distinguished School Recognition Award Ceremony for Vintage High School and New Tech High School. An enormous congratulations to Principal Dev and Hutchinson and their entire faculty for their exemplary achievements, it's quite an honor. And while I was there, I had the opportunity to have many conversations, as I know President Water did as well, with teachers who are so committed to their students and their craft. It is a reminder of why we need to acknowledge and appreciate the work of our faculty. I attended the Silverado Middle School Open House, it was fantastic. The first hour was dedicated to community information and support. All of our collaborative partners had booths in the quad. Parents and students were learning about their students' academic programs, as well as receiving information regarding a myriad of scaffolding that helps build a supportive educational community. And a big shout-out to the sixth-grade corridor that had an amazing display of Greek and Roman history. The children were in costume, as well as one of the teachers, Ms. Aaron, who was in a full toga. Not only did parents enjoy the open house, but a large group of incoming fifth graders were also present. It was extremely well done. Had a governance call with our CSBA Governance Representative. As referenced, we had a Governance and Priority Planning Board meeting last evening, and tomorrow I get to attend the PV Pollinator Showcase. And that concludes my report.
Good evening. So since our last meeting, I had the pleasure of watching the ACHS Drama Students put on a wonderful show called Legally Blonde with Trustee Water. And kudos to Drama Teacher Summer Hart for always putting on a great show. It's really fabulous. I wore pink to celebrate that attendance. On May 1st, I attended the ACMS Open House, as my son is going into seventh grade next year. On the 6th, I also attended the News-Napa Presentation and Resource Fair. On the 7th, I listened in to the Napa County Board of Education meeting. And I want to recognize that May is Asian American Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, so I want to recognize that for all of our community across NVUSD. And of course, I think as our trustee, my fellow trustees here have mentioned, this week is Employee Appreciation Week, and I can't say it any better than my trustee to my left, but thank you for putting up with my children. And that concludes my report.
All right. I too wanted to start by giving a shout-out to all of our staff during this, our Staff Appreciation Week. And then on the 7th, as was already mentioned by Principal Ainsworth, I attended the Napa High School Block Party. And then on the 8th, I attended the CSBA Presentation on the Future of Region 14, which replaces CCBE. And then also on the 8th, the Superintendent Evaluation. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Well, I had, since the last board meeting, I've had incessant community engagement. On April 27th, I had a wonderful time at Legally Blonde with Trustee Chu, and we walked out saying, what a lot of talent is in this school, and Summer Hart manages to find it all. It was just the greatest show. On May 3rd, I went down to the Southern California for the California Department of Education School Recognition Awards. Congratulations to Vintage High School and to New Tech High School. And yep, I did have a lot of fun talking to other teachers and other principals about how they do things. It was, it was fun. And on May 5th, I, I went to Napa High's production of a very edgy musical that combines several genres, and it's called You're in Town, and I want to doff my chapeau to Duncan Cooper, who, again, it was just, it's, I have seen, I have seen professional productions of this show, and I didn't enjoy them any more than I enjoyed this one. And it was just so funny, so great, very political, and just indescribable. And on May 6th, I also attended the Presentation and Resource Fair at American Canyon High School. Thank you to News, thank you to the District Attorney's Office, and thank you to the Napa PD and the Napa High School SRO who came in and gave us some very useful information. On May 7th, I attended in person the Napa County Office of Education Meeting. On May 8th, we had a Superintendent Evaluation Meeting. And today, May 9th, I attended the Napa City-City Recycling Awards. I know that sounds very glamorous. I was invited, because I'm a master gardener, I had the pleasure of interacting with the mayor, some, some, some of the Farc County Supervisors, City Council Member, and sitting with, having breakfast with Gloria Aguilar, who works for us. And yes, it is our employees. And yes, it is our Employees Thank You Month, and Gloria leaves no stone unturned. Before breakfast was over, she had the compost committee of the UC Master Gardeners agreeing to do a demonstration for one of her crew's professional development days. And I just want, Rob, I want you to know that it's, we know charge for our services. So it's a high-value item and low cost. And yes, and we also have another Cultural Heritage Award. This is Jewish Heritage Month, and I just want to say I am, and we also had Cinco de Mayo this year, and I want to, this month, and I want to say I'm really grateful to live in a community with so many different kinds of people, and we all pretty much get along almost all the time. And that's the end of my report. Board Representative Reports? Do we have any?
You've got to go down the line.
Oh, wait, I have to go down the line. Oh, sorry. Special Ed Committee, did you meet?
We have not met.
Okay. City of American Canyon?
We also have not met.
Okay. City of Napa?
We have not met.
Yep. Town of Yountville?
We have not met.
100%. Okay. And now Superintendent and Executive Staff?
Right.
Those of you who are here?
Right. Good evening, President Water, Board of Trustees, and Student Board Representative McGrath. I want to begin by addressing the obvious change tonight, as I sit in Dr. Masetti's seat. Dr. Masetti is not in attendance this evening. She is representing the Napa Valley Unified School District in the Urban Education Dialogue Superintendent Group in San Diego for two days, where a selected group of superintendents come together from across the state to discuss and strategize around policy and legislative issues impacting California public schools. I'm grateful for the opportunity to step in for the second time as the Secretary to the Board of Education during this May meeting, as she engages in this important advocacy work. And now for my regular HR report. Thank you for all the trustees who reminded us about celebrating our Employee Appreciation Week, and I would like to also take a moment to thank each and every one of our staff members who are listening for your remarkable dedication and wavering commitment and relentless pursuit of excellence. This week is a special opportunity for us to express our heartfelt gratitude to the remarkable individuals who make our organization thrive. Every day this week, we've been able to pause, reflect, and celebrate our employees. We started on Monday with a great video produced by our Communications Department. On Tuesday, we spun the virtual wheel of prizes and gave away a bunch of wonderful items that were donated by businesses in our community who value our employees just as much as we do. And yesterday, we celebrated, oh, today we had, oh, yesterday was longevity milestones, and then today, everyone received a little NVUSD swag item with a sweet treat that was provided by Nosh. And the festivities continue tomorrow, as each site and department celebrate their own teams. In fact, some did that a little bit early this week, and we don't mind, just as long as there's something for everybody. Employee Appreciation Week serves as an annual reminder that we value not just individual accomplishments, but also our work as a team, and that through our diversity, we find strength and inspiration. Before I conclude my report, I have to take the opportunity to say to Finn, go Bruins! So happy for you. And I will resist the urge to do a little eight clap right now, but maybe later we can do that together. And now that officially concludes my report, and we will now hear from Assistant Superintendent Rob Manguala, who leads our Business Services Department.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to update the board and the community. I'd like to start by thanking the West Park community and Principal Kate Lineman for hosting two community meetings regarding the fencing project at their school. I was able to attend the meeting that occurred earlier this week, and have also had a number of phone calls with community members. Before discussing any fencing projects for NVUSD, I'd like to remind the public that our first priority with fencing is the safety of our students, employees, and community. While no fence will stop someone who's intent on harming others or damaging a facility, fencing does provide added protection and is a worthy investment of public funds. I know that this school district takes its priority very seriously, and I also know that access to school sites outside of the school day is also very important. Community members express how important the school was to them and the role that the facility played in their day-to-day lives. The West Park community is clearly very involved in their school. Since the community does not have a park nearby, the community uses the field and playground at the West Park facility as their neighborhood park. I saw this firsthand when I visited the school site after school. The field and playground were also being used. One of the parents mentioned that their student actually learned to ride a bike on our playground. Continued access to the facility is clearly important to the West Park community. At the meeting, the community also expressed some very strong concerns about the fencing project. The primary concern was related to the portion of the fencing that separated the field and the playground. This fence would essentially bifurcate the property, separating the field from the playground and the remainder of the school. The other primary concerns included limited access to the field during the instructional day potentially, it could potentially cause a safety concern if parents were trying to evacuate the main campus toward the back of campus, not allow access to the playground after hours and on the weekend. There were some concerns also about exits through the gates, and also some location of some of the perimeter fencing. So the district is committed to engaging with the community and listening to the feedback to the greatest extent possible. With these goals in mind, I do recommend that the project include eliminating the internal fence in question, and I have received confirmation from the superintendent that she supports this change. This change has also been communicated to our construction management firm. So the item before you tonight will still allow her to make these changes after the approval of the contract. So no changes need to be made to the contract that you see before you tonight. Starting this summer and in the 2425 school year, we will conduct research and an evaluation of our policies and practice related to fencing and campus access across the district based on lessons learned from the earlier phases of fencing projects implemented over the last few years, and we may make some changes. So changing over to on the budget front, tomorrow is an important day, so the governor will announce the budget tomorrow. There will not be a lot of information, other than he will give a speech. It's proposed to be at 10:00 AM. You'll see some very high-level stuff come on about the overall state budget, along with information specific to the education budget. We will start to see things put out in writing over the next couple of weeks, along with the May revise update coming around the 20th of May. This concludes my report.
Thank you.
Matt?
Oh, wait.
My apologies.
Matt's here.
No, that's my fault. We do have another report from our Instructional Division, and tonight, it looks like we have Director Matt Manning who will be giving that report.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, President Water, Board of Trustees, Assistant Superintendent Page, and Student Board Member McGrath. The Instructional Division continues to work diligently towards achieving the success criteria set forth in this year's Annual Board Priorities. In alignment with Annual Board Priority 2, the kindergarten through 2nd grade district writing assessment wrapped up last week at all elementary schools. As part of our district writing assessment process, teachers spend time building student background knowledge of the writing focus, which was informational writing about sharks this year. Depending on the grade level, teachers read students a book or article about sharks to help build their background knowledge. Students watch a video to see sharks in action, providing students with more visual details to incorporate into their writing. Teachers lead students through note-taking with a graphic organizer, and then students begin to write. The DWA is an important measure of student writing progress, and our centralized calibration and scoring process that begins next week allows us to find trends in student writing across all schools. This information is used by the Instructional Division, site leaders, and teachers to guide instructional planning. On Monday, May 6th, the NVUSD College and Career Readiness Leadership Team held their third meeting of the year. District leaders, site leaders, teachers, counselors, partners, and parents conducted a self-assessment on career readiness using the ConnectEd District Conditions Development Rubric. Staff analyzed our readiness in five areas. Leadership, Commitment, and Accountability; Access, Equity, Access and Choice; High Quality Learning and Teaching; Sustained Partnerships; and Operational Alignment. Each team identified one to two priorities within each area for the coming school year and collectively narrowed the priorities to six. We will review and finalize on June 3rd. The strategic and collaborative process is furthering progress towards a sustainable, integrated career readiness plan that is aligned to the NVUSD graduate portrait, a key success indicator in Annual Board Priority Number Four. An annual poetry event was held last week in the Adapt Program at Vintage High School. Each year, Mark Holston, Education Specialist, leads a highly engaging poetry unit in our Adapt Program that culminates in a student poetry reading. Adapt is a specialized program for students with intensive mental health-based needs that NVUSD operates in collaboration with ALDEA. And this year's event was held on Thursday, March, sorry, May 2nd. Once again, Mark hosted and facilitated a warm, engaging, and celebratory process in which students were championed for taking the risk to share their poems or have others share their work for them. As always, this cathartic, emotional, humorous, and healing event was one of the highlights of the school year for Adapt. Finally, on behalf of the Instructional Division Leadership Team, we would like to express our most sincere thanks to all of the employees in the Napa Valley Unified School District. In their own way, we know that every one of them contributes to setting the stage for student well-being and academic success every day. Thank you.
That's a great report, and to think I almost skipped it over. And you'll tell us about the district writing assessment, you know, the results. I'm glad we're bringing it back. It sounds great. Okay. And now, Approval of Consent Agenda. Background information on these items is provided to the board prior to the meeting. A common motion takes action without discussion, a roll-call vote, unless discussion of items is requested by board members. Do we have any public comments on the consent items?
There is no public comment on consent items.
Thank you.
I move to approve them.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion from trustee Gracia, a second by trustee Hart, and this will be a roll-call vote.
Student Board Member McGrath?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Trustee Gracia?
Aye.
Trustee Chu?
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Aye.
Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez-Mares?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we move to Presentations and Discussion Items. First one is Business Services Demographics Data Presentation. Do we have any public comments on this item?
We do have to get the presentation first.
Oh, we do the presentation first. Okay, sorry. Let's do the presentation, and I love demographics.
Good evening, President Water, trustees, Ms. Page, and Student Board Member McGrath. This evening, you will hear from Rob Murray, Director of Demographics of King's Consulting, where he will share details of the most recent demographic analysis and facility capacity study, which includes our enrollment projections. Before Mr. Murray speaks, Director Miller and I will share some context for our annual projections, their importance, and how they impact the work done in the Business Services Each year, Mr. Murray provides us with projections by grade level and school, with a number of students we expect to have enrolled on CalPads Day, which is the first Wednesday of October. Why do we choose CalPads Day? The enrollment on CalPads Day is used for the local control funding formula, which directly impacts our budget, so it's important that we can predict what enrollment will look like on that particular day. Because of the direct tie to funding, the projections are used by the business office when working on multi-year projections. Additionally, we use these projections to determine the FTE allocation or staffing at school sites, as well as the elementary classroom configurations, which Director Miller will speak to momentarily. We also regularly look at the ARES roll-up numbers. This is defined as the total enrollment in ARES, which is our student information system, for a particular school for the next school year on any given day. As you might expect, these numbers fluctuate throughout the year as students enroll, drop, transfer schools, and open enrollment and inter-district transfer decisions are made by the enrollment center. But they typically are close to matching the projections by the time we get to CalPads Day each year. We receive our first set of projections from Mr. Murray in December or January each year, and they continue to be adjusted throughout the year as we closely monitor the roll-up numbers. Historical data on roll-up numbers compared to projections between January and the start of the school year allow us to monitor trends and to recognize anomalies so that we can adjust staffing and classroom configurations as needed. And with that, I will pass it to Director Miller.
Thank you, Doctor.
Good evening. So, projection numbers are foundational in the enrollment planning process. These numbers support some key steps along the way, such as determining how many seats are available during our open enrollment process, and they anchor the schedule planning process at sites. At the elementary level, these numbers inform classroom configurations, such as the number of teachers at each grade level and combination grade level classes. At the secondary level, these numbers inform master schedule planning. Next slide, please. Beginning this school year, enrollment projections were used to centrally configure all elementary school classrooms, and this process is happening again for the 2425 school year. Centrally configuring elementary sites has several benefits. Configurations are measured against projected enrollment at the site level and the system level in both Napa and American Canyon to ensure that the appropriate number of seats are available at each grade level in both communities. This process helps minimize the number of combination classes. In this current school year, we saw a 35% reduction in combo classes at elementary schools. Elementary schools saw a 22% reduction in the number of teacher overage MOUs, and only one site needed to reconfigure or adjust a teacher assignment in early August, with no adjustments happening after the first day of school. Next slide. Projection data is also going to be essential as we plan for the anticipated growth in the community of American Canyon. As you'll hear from Mr. Murray in just a moment, residential development is occurring in the city of American Canyon, and this development will result in new students moving into that community. Families can and will arrive at many points during the school year, so projection data will support proper planning across all five campuses so that there is space available in all grade levels. American Canyon schools receive the highest number of out-of-district requests in NVUSD, and projection data informs the number of inter-district seats that we're able to offer. These transfers are leveraged to maintain healthy enrollment levels and do not impact the ability of new students, new local students, to enroll. And with that, I will pass to Mr. Murray from King's Consulting.
Thank you, and it's good, as always, to be back in Napa. President Water, members of the board, Student Representative McGrath, and Assistant Superintendent Page. I've seen this enough times to know the obligations before we begin speaking, but as we have indicated, we have been here before, a lot of you have seen me several times, but I will just give you a quick update. Again, there's a much larger report that has a lot more information. If you happen to have read that and have questions about something that I don't touch on tonight, do feel free to ask. I'm always happy to talk about all of this, probably more than anybody else really wants to, but should you want to join me on that path, happy to go down it. But let's go ahead, and we'll go to our next slide, please. And so just that quick overview. District-wide, and of course, as has been acknowledged, we do project the American Canyon area separately from the Napa/remainder of the district area, just because the demographics and enrollment trends are very, very different in these two parts of the district. But again, looking at that total wide Napa Valley Unified total enrollment number, total enrollment continues to decrease. Demographically, this is actually the case in both areas. You'll see some examples of that. But the simple, just unavoidable reason for this is that births are down, there are just fewer school-aged children living in your communities than there have been at different points in your past. Now, there are some offsetting factors, and that is why, particularly in American Canyon, where you have just through kind of geography and relative ease of access, there is more inter-district enrollment there. That has kept, in recent history, American Canyon numbers relatively stable, when just based on demographics, we would have expected them to be decreasing. And then residential development, as was just mentioned, is really picking up, this kind of long-awaited American Canyon development that we've been keeping an eye on, waiting for it, waiting for it, waiting for it to start, is... for it, waiting for it, waiting for it to start, is fully underway in some areas. And so as that development generates new students, that kind of in combination with some of the other things that have been happening in the recent past, if everything proceeds based on what we have been seeing, that's when we'll see the growth that we're projecting. So I want to kind of define what that growth is based on. But even with what we're seeing in American Canyon, district-wide total enrollment is expected to continue decreasing throughout the projection period, which we go out seven years for. So we can go ahead and go to the next slide. We'll just see some details on some of what we've been talking about. First is that look at historical enrollments. Just those reminders with those two years with asterisks, where it appears that enrollment has gone up, that is when the schools in what was then River and the Napa Valley Language Academy that had been charter schools came in as just standard district enrollment. And so it appears that you have these jumps, that is more of a bookkeeping technicality. The number of kids in all of those schools was never really changing, but so if you adjust for that, it has been a pretty steady decrease since the 2014-15 school year. So next slide, please. And some enrollment trends, that top one, I like to include, just as a reminder, that when you look at school district enrollment, the big driving force is, again, every year you have some new kindergarteners who come in at the elementary level, they take the place of your fifth graders who are moving up to middle school. District-wide, they take the place of those seniors who are graduating. But if there's a difference in size of who's coming in versus who's going out, that sets the pace. Again, there can be offsetting factors that nudge it back towards even or even push it positive, but your default setting is every single year, some group of kids move on and a smaller group of kids comes in to take their place. But again, you see how that also takes time to play out. So you see going back over the decade, the elementary numbers are the ones that have really decreased the most, because that's where you initially see that impact hit first. You didn't really start seeing it in the middle schools until fairly recently, and you're really only just starting to see it in the high schools, where again, you had been growing up through 2014-15. And so the students who entered school during the very end of that period of growth are still in high school right now. So you haven't really started to fully see that impact of those larger populations of kids graduating, and then particularly when you're looking at the high school, you kind of already know who you have enrolled. Again, absent some people who will move into your community over the next few years, but the core of your student population's already there, and you just know there aren't as many of them as there used to be. And that bottom graph just really illustrates what we're looking at with those, that darker blue is the size of the district-wide kindergarten cohort, and you can just see from that peak of almost 1,200 new students coming into the district in your last year of growth, you've been down below 1,000 now for the last two years. However, that lighter blue color is transitional kindergarten, which as a reminder, that program, we're now halfway through the rollout, so that by 2025-26, every four-year-old who wants to come enroll in TK, regardless of exactly when their birthday is, gets to come enroll in TK. Now, what this does is it adds more students to your elementary schools, but the size of that age cohort doesn't really change, just you get to enroll more of them as four-year-olds instead of waiting until they're five. But once they come into kindergarten the next year, you're still talking about the same group of kids. But as you see with the total size of that dark blue and light blue line together, you are seeing an increase in how many kids you're getting in those early grades. So we can go ahead and go to our next slide. Just a quick reminder of total populations, we have, you know, we see this across the board, just looking at census data, that the total population of your communities is growing. But you also see that, you know, American Canyon, which if we go back and look at some of my previous presentations on this, has sometimes had a much higher proportion of that under-18 population, and the same demographic trends that have been hitting Napa, we're beginning to see hitting American Canyon as well. There just aren't as many families that have someone under-18 living in that home. There are fewer children overall, and so even as total population grows, it doesn't necessarily mean that your school-age population is growing at the same rate. Just a quick reminder on that, and the next slide. This is just where we're going to hit, though, on that first big factor of student generation from residential development. The first half of that, if we can go ahead, perfect, is student generation rates, and this is really, really important, because we're projecting for how many kids you're going to get from all this new development that's happening. And so we don't do that by using generalized numbers, we do that by looking at what's been built in your community, and it's a really fun glamorous part of the job, but then just literally going through and looking at the addresses of what's been built, looking at your student list to see how many people from those addresses are enrolled in your schools, and then getting these rates of, if you build a home, on average, how many students do you get? I like to kind of multiply them by 10 or 100 so that you get a better rate, but you can really see the big difference. In the Napa-Yountville area, you're down below a .1 and a .08 for single-family detached housing. That means if you build 100 single-family homes, based on what we're seeing in Napa, you're going to get about eight students enrolling in your schools, and that's across TK through 12th grade. In American Canyon, you see a significantly higher rate, and that's where the first of what I want to point out as something that we are very excited to finally have information in American Canyon on really brand-new single-family detached housing, because that's, there's been some other kinds of projects in American Canyon the last few years. What's happening in Watson Ranch right now particularly is our, going to be our first real new look at this. And I'll be very curious if we continue seeing the same very, very high single-family numbers. But as of now, historically, we can attest that even though some of that most recently built stock is getting somewhat old now, you're still getting a lot of kids out of that, shows that a lot of families with kids are moving into these homes in American Canyon. You also see multifamily, you know, so basically rental apartments for the most part, you see the same trend, but affordable housing, below-market rate housing, that's the one where regardless of where it is, anytime you build affordable housing in your district, you're going to see almost one kid per unit out of it, whether that's in American Canyon or in Napa. So very important, because there have been some affordable projects in Napa, but again, we're talking, even if you build 50, 100 units at a time, in the face of the wider demographic trends, it helps bring some more kids to the district, it's not going to completely counter what you're seeing from the local birth rate. So we can go ahead and go to the next slide. This is just a quick summary of the most significant developments that we're keeping an eye on, and you can just mainly see the big distinction. It's about a tenfold difference between how many students we expect to enroll in your district. Now, not all of this is going to happen immediately, and some of these are building out over many, many years. But with these projects, more than 1,000 total students who will be at some point coming to American Canyon schools, and a fraction of that in Napa. And so that's why particularly with American Canyon, and this year, we're really breaking those two areas out when we get to the projections, just to show you kind of the two different stories that are going on there. We can go ahead and go to our next section, which is just a quick look at that student spatial analysis. As always, a reminder that we're looking at these enrollments, we're projecting who's actually enrolled by school, but when you look at, especially with your magnet programs that you have in this district and the choice that you give families, there's always going to be a lot of movement. And you're also going to get some students coming in from outside of the district. And so this just shows where all of your students live. You go down any column, that is the school boundary, so you can just see, looking at Alta Heights, it's just an example, 193 students living in the boundary, 103 of them are going to that home school, and then you see where everyone else who lives in the boundary is going. You look across the rows, that is the attendance at each school, you can see where students live who are attending that school. We always find this is just maybe the single most useful page in the report, just to give you a lot of information. But we can go ahead and go to the next slide, and that's just a map that visualizes the net migration. So this is, this all is a zero sum. Every kid is a, who doesn't attend their home school is a minus from the boundary they're leaving and a plus to the boundary of the school they're going to. And so you can just see the patterns again with schools like NVLA and Pueblo Vista in the mix, you're going to have these big draws from some of the magnet programs. So that's expected, that's a, you know, a kind of a feature, not a bug, when you see that, when you have those programs, but you do see the overall net result of all of that student movement. So we can go ahead and go to our next slide. And just that quick reminder of the non-resident students, again, based on where they are from and the schools they are going to, again, that, you know, American Canyon High and American Canyon Middle comprise the majority of those non-resident students who are enrolled in NVUSD. The next two schools are also American Canyon elementary schools. So again, that is really the story that we're talking about with this. There is certainly some amount throughout the district, but we can go to the next slide, and this is more keeping in mind, though this doesn't break that out, that the, a lot of this non-resident enrollment, inter-district enrollment into NVUSD schools is in the American Canyon schools, and keeping in mind in that recent history, American Canyon total enrollment has looked very stable. That has, this is what's been coming in and offsetting what you would otherwise have expected to have been decreasing based on who's actually living in the community. So one more slide into the enrollment projections, and this is just that reminder of the history of births. So here we are showing district-wide, looking at the kindergarten and TK together, probably the last year I'm going to do it this way, because now you see that line shooting up as you're getting way, way more TK. So the state reports it that way, but we'll start breaking it out, so you can see that correlation a little better. But one thing that you'll notice is for, when Napa, historically, the darker blue lines started ticking down in births more noticeably, American Canyon had held steady, still topping 200 births fairly regularly, but you now look at the most recent few years, and it's clear that, as I alluded to earlier, that demographic trend that Napa has been grappling with is increasingly undeniably occurring in American Canyon, too. And then you can just see the total height of all those bars. Everyone that you see from 2019 and on, where there's no red line superimposed with it, those are your birth cohorts that you haven't seen come to you as kindergarteners yet, and it's just hard to get out from under the fact that it's just hard for your enrollment to go up if there aren't as many kids being born and living in your district. So next slide, and that's just, of course, part of it. So the biggest drive is always that cohort replacement, how many are coming in, who's going out, but all of, you're not on a remote island, it's very relatively easy for people to move into and out of Napa. And so this looks at your existing cohorts, all of your kindergarteners through 11th graders the year before, they leave for the summer, they come back the next year, for the most part, as first through 12th graders. And in American Canyon, that darker blue in this case, you see very consistently net growth among those kids that you would expect to get back. It's not that you're only picking up, in reality, some are leaving, but more are coming in. In the last couple of years, you've topped 6% net growth in those cohorts, and Napa, even this year, saw actual cohort growth for the first time. Yeah, there was one other year that was less than 1%, but seeing some growth in Napa, and that in part is that there has been some residential development in Napa, that tends to be the heaviest correlation we have here. This does indicate that there are more people with existing school-aged children who are moving into your communities, but again, it's kind of swimming against the current. It's, you know, it's making an impact, but not enough to offset the biggest trend that's happening. And so that, the net result of all of this, we'll go ahead and look at the last slide, is again, there's that reminder that we prepare the projections completely separate for each area, we also, because again, you've seen some of this historical data, there's variation in what goes on with some of the input factors, so we can look, especially in the short term, what if everything kind of lines up with the highest numbers we've seen recently? What if everything lines up with the lowest? But what we found is typically using the lower numbers for Napa-Yountville, you know, again, based on some of what we saw this year with that cohort migration finally shooting positive, we might re-approach this next year, but this has been very reliable for us, using the lower numbers in the Napa area, moderate numbers in the American Canyon area, and combining those two projections for your planning and projection, which is what we'll show you here. And so on the next slide, you have, you know, again, we're not going to read all of the numbers, but again, you see from over 16,000 now, expected to dip into the 15,000s, and then over the next five years, continuing just to steadily and consistently decrease in enrollment, and you can see up at those top rows, the main reason for that, even as you're expecting to continue getting more transitional kindergarten students, the number of TK coming in, from, you know, you just recently adjusted to going from over 1,000 coming in every year to just less than 1,000, we're now going to be dropping below 900, most likely based on how many kids we know were born in your communities. And then you also can see, as I had alluded to, the high school enrollment is really just the last couple of years, you've started seeing the first of those smaller cohorts begin to hit high school, and now you're going to have that full replacement of your very largest historical cohorts from back when you were a growing district or graduating out, and now you're really going to start seeing that hitting your high school levels. So then just last couple of slides, we're just going to break this out into the two area projections, so you just see a steeper decrease in the Napa area. This is where you're really seeing that impact of those kindergarten cohorts, and again, you have this, those particularly, you have still over 1,200 high school seniors in the Napa area this year. You only have one other cohort above 1,000 students, that's next-year seniors, and then after that, you are largely in those newer, smaller cohorts. And yeah, we can go ahead and go to American Canyon, and here's where, again, you still see, looking across that top row, the kindergarten, and this is even augmented with some additional kinders that we expect you'll get due to who we're building in from the new homes being built, but dropping into, you know, you had historically been kind of in the mid-200s of American Canyon kindergarteners, kind of moving down into the low 200s, one year, again, we know you had that first year of really, really low birth, so we think 2027, that'll translate to a low kindergarten class, but building in who you're getting from residential development, along with knowing that you have that, you know, almost every year, inter-district students going up, that combined is leading to this growth. So this is more of a projection of, based on what we're seeing now, we definitely want to look at, as the Watson Ranch builds out and is occupied, are those student generation rates staying as high as they have been historically? But given that a lot of what's going to be built, will be reflective more of what we're going to see from these first couple of phases and projects that are going on, that's going to be big. And then with whatever we are seeing with, you know, the district has a lot of control over what happens with inter-district policies, but based on what we see historically and what's changing in the future, this is what that would look like, and still, we're, you know, relatively modest growth, given that it's split between five schools, but we are looking at some increases across the board, kind of when taking all of those things into thought. So, lot of information as always, I think, I believe, if we go to one more slide, that's all that I have prepared, yes. So I will just answer questions if you have any for me, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you. Well, board, do we have any? Trustee Shu?
I always have comments about and questions about demographics, because that's all, that's about a quarter of my communications with the community in American Canyon, and it's, of course, about Watson's Ranch, because that is the big development going in. I think the community is always, was always aware, when my community went in, there was a huge influx of students, because I don't think the district anticipated multifamilies moving into large 4,000-square-foot homes.
Exactly, and yep.
And I don't think that that's necessarily going to be the case, because of homes are much smaller that are going in in Watson's Ranch, I don't know. I think when housing prices is so expensive, that would drive that also. So I think the questions I've always been hearing, and I think I know the answer, because it's always the same answer every year, is when we have the influx of students... it's always the same answer every year, is when we have the influx of students, even if it's trickling in, but at the end of the development, you will have, I think you mentioned over 1,000 new students coming in. How do we, how does, how would the district handle? Maybe this is more a question for the district staff here, is how would the district accommodate those kids coming in as the development is selling? And we do have some homes, I know that people are moving in. You know, my, I always hear like, oh, we're going to have so many people coming in. And I'm like, well, they're not all like, all the homes are not all putting, being put in at the same time.
Yet the timeline.
Yeah. So do we, do we have like an idea of what the timeline is going to be? How, how is it, is it trickling in? Or is it you have families that already have kids coming in, based on what you know right now, given that a few homes have sold? I don't know if you have that information.
Yeah, no, absolutely. So I can answer that. So we take our enrollment projections exceptionally serious. And so we did see like a little bit of transition, like my wonderful director team kind of taking this on this year instead of just myself. And so it starts really with CalPads Day really early on. And then we literally compare our enrollment projection from the prior year to what we actually see in Aries. And so Peter and his team have put together a wonderful system where we've got this database, what's a spreadsheet? We call it a database. It compares enrollment daily. So we literally have a two-year record of enrollment daily that compares to our enrollment projections. And from that data, we can gather trends and figure out, like, for example, if we look at the high schools, we know, for example, if they roll up at this point a year, the number that we see in Aries right now isn't the number that they're actually going to get. They're going to lose X number of students. And so in American Canyon, it's similar in the sense that we know how many inter-district transfers are coming in. So what Susan does, who is up there also, is she watches the enrollment numbers and the staffing and controls that very closely. And so we look at the enrollment projection and we're really tight about letting in enters. So there are more enters we could let in, but we always leave spaces for students that could come up throughout the year. So we do watch that very closely. But again, overall, the trend is still the same. With all the building, we would not have an increase in enrollment in American Canyon if we stopped letting in inter-district transfers. So the only way that we see the increase is with the combination of inter-district transfers at the current rate we have right now and the building. And then also to confirm what you noticed is that, you know, the building doesn't happen all at once, right? So it does take some time. They are smaller units, so they're, you know, 1,500 square feet to maybe a little bit larger than that. So they are, building costs are very expensive. The price point is good. It's a very competitive price point that I've seen for the area. So I would anticipate that they will sell, but they're, we'll just have to wait and see and look at the number. But ultimately, again, what does it come down to? We staff and allocate extra space so that we don't run into issues like that.
And on your, like, slide 27, and you are projecting the enrollments in the out years, the five years.
Can you bring that up, Jordan, please? Slide 27.
From 2024 to 25, all the way out to 28, 29. Is that including inter-district transfers?
Yes, it does. Can you confirm that?
Yes. Yeah. And that's, as I had mentioned, would be, that's why I kind of caveated a little more heavily than I sometimes do. Because this is the first time we're seeing that impact from residential development. And that was why, that this is what it would look like with no change to what we've seen historically from the inter-districts in that if the district changes something, you can see these higher numbers at the end go down.
So that's if we just keep with the percentage of inter-district transfers that we bring in. So I know that the biggest question that I get is at the middle school. Because the middle school is the largest. It is in NVUSD. It's over 1,000. And a lot of people feel like that is already too big. And I'm seeing when you get down over to 27, 28, it's at 1,200. That's like over 150 more than what there is now.
Yeah. So that's an assumption of everything stays the same. And so again, we're watching that very closely. And then we just wouldn't allow it to get that big. We would just.
So you would control the number of inter-district transfers?
Yeah. We're absolutely doing that. And so we're very aware of that. And, you know, one of the things that we did this year, for example, is we closed inter-district transfers really early in the fall. And so we'll continue to do that. And so.
What for? What grades?
We actually did, we actually did all grades.
Even at American Canyon High School, where we have capacity for another 500 students, if you took out the inter-district transfers, which is two and change, that's 700 kids. So would we, I mean.
There are a couple of reasons to close down inter-district transfers early, right? Sometimes we'll allow them to go a little bit later at the high school. But I think the biggest challenge is it starts to get disruptive, right? So disruptive from the standpoint that once you've built a master schedule, it's very, it's very difficult to adjust it. So what we, you know, we allocate staffing based on our enrollment projections, right? And so then a master schedule is built. Even within that master schedule that's built, you know, there's a certain number of spaces that are left. And then, so if we go too late, then we simply, we just, it's just, yeah, would it be beneficial to students who potentially the district? Yes. But it would also be disruptive. We have to just balance that out. And so, yeah, we've, in JustFE, we've learned from mistakes early on that continuing to allow inter-district transfers late through the year, it's also not necessarily good for a student to move mid-year also. So it creates lots of challenges for the system.
I really appreciate this report because, especially for American Canyon, that is growing. I think we are able to plan much better than if we had no idea and we just kind of assumed, right, that certain things are going to happen. And so I'm glad we have a plan going forward and how we can keep at reasonable numbers in our schools in American Canyon because we do have the largest schools there. We have the largest elementary school. We have the largest middle school. So, yeah, thank you for the work.
Thank you.
I just, again, thank you because it really does help us understand the validation of the declining enrollment issue. I mean, and that's a lot of planning as we go into all of our, you know, three-year, five-year projections, understanding this. And your spreads have been so good. I mean, the accuracy has been really amazing over the last decade. So it's, it is a really helpful tool. So thank you for all your work.
And one of the other things we're starting to speak about, too, especially with the reorganization in the school district and operations, we're talking about potentially, hey, like, do we, is it economically feasible to stand up a bus? For example, like, you know, bring some of the students from the, from the American Canyon area, not the resident students, but the inter-district transfers that come from Vallejo and Fairfield to some of our other schools? And see if there's a willingness to kind of do that? Because we do, we have our middle schools in the Napa area, they're all projected to go down around the 600 area. So they're all, they will continue to decline in the very near future due to the smaller cohorts working through the system.
Trustee Rossian.
Yeah. I had a question. I was curious, what are the chances that the generation rates in American Canyon begin to look more like Napa, considering that the American Canyon population is starting to become similar to the age of the Napa population?
I think you will, I suspect for a lot of the reasons we've heard tonight, that, because again, with the generation, we're really trying to look ideally at, this is the generation rate from new housing being built. And so with competitive price points and kind of enticing younger families who are moving from other parts of the Bay Area to find housing developments like this, that will still see some healthy student generation rates. But with, Trustee Chu, with your point, yes, I was not personally around them, but I've still heard the stories about when Canyon Oaks was built and the assumptions on student generation and how high they came in. And those are still, a lot of those houses still represent relatively the most recent single-family homes that have been built. But what's interesting is that even as we continue looking at them, we're still seeing this very elevated number of students because typically statewide, you know, with all the districts that I work for around the state, something between 0.3 to 0.35 is what I consider an average rate for your single-family detached housing. And your district is considering, because you have one part of your district that is way below that and another part of your district that's way above that. And so, yes, I do think as we start finally having some really, really real-time kind of this community is built, here's the first phase, let's see how many kids moved in, let's use that to now say phases two, three, and four, what's going to happen, that we will see that single-family number in American Canyon probably dip down. I still think you're going to be noticeably higher than what I am calling my state average, but probably not up around hovering up around 0.8 like we've been seeing. But that, but again, that's, I tend to be a little conservative in that I trust the historical data until I have a very, very good reason not to. Because there's part of me that would have said, you know, these houses that I'm continuing to look at in American Canyon, there's no way they'll keep producing this many kids for this long, and they have. So let's, again, show you a projection that looks like, let's say Watson Ranch keeps doing that, and there's just something with American Canyon that houses in that community are just going to really attract a lot of those new families with school-age kids. But again, I'm very excited to, particularly with a very large project like Watson Ranch, where you can really use the early phases of the project to really accurately project the full multi-year build-out.
Thank you. Appreciate some of the work you've done to give us some information, particularly about the transfer students. I think that's been very helpful to hear tonight.
Any other comments? Thank you so much. To me, it's, you bring in some sense and some predictability in something that is actually quite unpredictable. I live in Napa and I'm thinking of a development near me that went in. And everyone said, okay, this is going to be housing. This is going to be housing. Yeah, it was housing all right. 50% of it, people bought for second homes. So that did not give us, we didn't get any children out of that. In fact, I've never seen a child walk in and out of Register Square. So it's, there's housing and then there's housing. But thank you very much for this. Should we take a break now?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks very much. Next, it's Instructional Services. Introduction of supplementary instructional materials adoption, recommendations for elementary and middle school.
Good evening again. I'm back tonight to introduce for your consideration the World of Work Beable Platform. The program will be used at by teachers at Shear TK8 School in grades two through eight as they develop units of study based on their magnet theme, which is career exploration. Through the program, students begin with an interest survey that guides them towards exploration of potential future careers. They learn about the requirements for multiple career pathways and what is needed to be successful in that career choice. Students read and study about those careers. And the program contains resources for teachers to set up classroom career mockups throughout the year. The program also provides access to the NepRIS technology, which allows groups of students to connect virtually with professionals who are coming to them live from their workplace so they get to see what it's like in that work environment and hear directly from professionals in the field. So the teachers at Shear are just now beginning to develop their magnet theme units, and we are excited to see how they incorporate this career exploration resource into those units. This item will be back on the May 23 agenda with a recommendation for your approval.
Do we have any public comments on this?
There is no public comment on this item.
Board members?
That's great. We're excited. Thank you.
Another great presentation. The last one was great. Okay. Next presentation is NVUSD Community Schools Update.
Good evening, President Water, Trustees, Student Board Member McGrath, and Assistant Superintendent Page. My name is Sarah Knox. I am the Director of Prevention and Intervention in the Instructional Support Services Division. And I just want to thank you for this opportunity to present to you this evening. We're pleased to provide you, the Board and the larger community, an overview and progress update on our NVUSD community schools. So first, I want to recognize the amazing team that I have here with me tonight is going to lead the bulk of the presentation. So we have the Coordinator of Student Wellness and Support, Roxana Plongarte. We have the Coordinator of Parent Engagement, Viviana Luera. And we have our Community School Program Administrators, Jessica DeGregorio from Phillips Elementary, Melissa Phillips from Snow. We have David Sosseda here, who represents Silverado Middle School and Valley Oak High School. And then not with us tonight, but also Program Administrators, Martha Martin from McPherson and Guadalupe Martinez from Shear. I also want to recognize our wonderful community partners who took their time to be here with us this evening. From On the Move, we have Alicia and Sonia. Thank you for being here. And for Mentis, we have Rob Weiss. And also one of our presenters or one of our community partners spoke earlier during the public comment, Greg Giers from Boys and Girls Cup in Napa Valley. We couldn't do this work without our amazing community partners. So tonight, we're going to provide an update on the community schools' implementation progress, focusing on the four pillars of community, of the California Community School framework, and spotlighting our successes within each pillar. We're going to hear from the Coordinator of Student Wellness and Support, our Coordinator of Parent Engagement, and our Community School Program Administrators, who coordinate this critical work at the school level. So I wanted to start by just sort of contextualizing this community schools' effort, the state community schools' effort in the grander context of the State Superintendent Tony Thurman's efforts to transform California schools. And so this pie sort of circle that you see in front of you represents his major, his key initiatives for transforming California schools. And so the one where you see the school with the, with the people inside of it is the California Community Schools section of that. It's definitely a huge investment at the state level. And then the others that you see within, I want to go back, within there that relate to community schools are the universal meals for all students, which you see the plate and the utensils there. Also, universal PK, which we referenced earlier, expanded learning programs, and also professional learning and mental health supports are other key initiatives at the state level. And so California has invested heavily, 4.1 billion in community schools. And the why behind community schools in general is that we're protecting our most vulnerable families and students through establishing whole child, whole family, and whole community connections at the school sites. The pandemic really exacerbated disparities, longstanding disparities in educational outcomes for students and families and drove unprecedented learning loss for students of color and students from low-income backgrounds. And so community schools specifically focuses on our most vulnerable populations, our most vulnerable schools. And you can see that only the schools with over 80% of students qualifying for free and reduced lunch were eligible for community schools grants. And so one response to the crisis coming out of the pandemic was doubling down on existing community schools' efforts in the state. So in Napa, here we go. In Napa, we've received two, two rounds of implementation grants. The first was beginning in 2022, and it was at McPherson, Snow, Shear, and Phillips. And the second was at Valley Oak High School and Silverado Middle School. And I do want to note that we applied for a third round with Napa High School, and we did not receive the funding. We found out just a couple of weeks ago. And the rationale given by the funders was that they were too low below that 80% threshold, and they're really tightening down on the state-level budgets. So unfortunately, we did not get that one, but we're going to continue to persevere and support the needs at Napa High School. So all of our, all of our Napa Valley community schools have above 80, or above 78% of students qualifying for free and reduced lunch. And we received implementation grants, which means that we had existing components of community schools in place, like family resource centers, mental health supports, expanded learning opportunity programs, so that we could just expand and double down on some of those existing efforts instead of starting from scratch. So our six community schools received the maximum allocation for their respective school sizes and had to develop comprehensive implementation plans and budgets as part of the grant requirements. And so I was privileged to lead the development and writing of these grants, but I'm and writing of these grants, but I'm going to turn the presentation over for a progress update from the folks who coordinate and lead these efforts on the front lines. And let's begin with Roxana Plongarte.
Okay, so we would like to just start by going a little bit over what is the California Community Schools framework. The vision of the California Community Schools framework is to support schools' transformation in partnership with students, families, communities, and educators. The California Community Schools framework calls for strategies to align, coordinate, and extend to wide range, the wide range of existing state, school, and district initiatives under the community schools' umbrella. NVUSD envisions that coordination of these efforts will result in closing gaps, preventing duplication of efforts, enhancing coordination, and bringing new resources to schools. Community schools are uniquely designed at each school site, and they're led by the school principal with delegated authority to program administrators. In tonight's presentation, some of these strategic components, such as the role of the community schools' program administrator, building relational trust to strengthen family connections, the impact of inclusive and collaborative leadership, and strategic partnerships to provide integrated health and social supports, will be highlighted as part of the implementation of the California Community Schools framework across the six community schools in our district.
Good evening. Community schools follow evidence-based practices grounded in bringing communities, families, students, and educators together to transform schools into thriving community hubs. This leads students and families to be more positively engaged in school. This supports students to learn and thrive in and out of school, leading to lifelong success. Each step has an important impact in itself, but each one also paves the way for other important areas of impact, leading to many outcomes. Implementing a community school strategies, a strategy impacts four key areas: transform schools, developed by and for students, educators, families, and community to provide whole-child learning environments; engage healthy, empowered students and families, due to meaningful decision-making, supportive school community, and access to resources; confident, well-prepared students. There's intentionality about the resources and supports provided to ensure students excel academically and personally. And four, local capacity for collaborative problem-solving, where school and community stakeholders work together to identify and monitor progress towards goals and outcomes. The ultimate goal is that students are thriving through building community, providing needed tools and resources, and developing a shared vision where all stakeholders are invested to create the conditions students need to thrive, and improving school-wide outcomes, which we can see there. Those are all amazing things that we all want to see improve, and community schools is positioned to do that.
To help us analyze and measure our desired outcomes, we're going to dive deeper into the four pillars of the community schools. One of the pillars, Expanded and Enriched Learning Opportunities, focuses on after-school, weekend, and summer programs and how we can further support. Another pillar, Integrated Student Supports, is where we lean heavily into mental health and physical health supports and social services for students and families. Collaborative Leadership and Practices pillar is where we thrive to build strong cultures of professional learning, trust, and continuous improvement. This third pillar really strongly leans into and with works with the active family and community engagement, where parents and caregivers in the school work as partners, leaders, and learners. The first pillar, oh, that's the wrong, sorry. The first pillar, Collaborative Leadership in Community Schools, is where you can see a shift from traditional top-down decision-making to a more collaborative, shared decision-making effort between all stakeholders involved. The first step that we were tasked to do as community school program administrators was our asset and needs assessment. This is a requirement for community schools, but it is also an important first step to start to transform our schools into stronger, shared leadership with students, staff, caregivers, and community members who all work together towards cultivating a shared leadership, shared, sorry, shared vision for each school site. The way we do deep learning and collaboration is not just through a survey, but through meaningful advisory teams, such as each school site's community school advisory team, the NVUSD Community School Network, and student advisory teams at each school site. The largest result and impact of this collaborative leadership work has been student voice being highly elevated this school year at every single site in relationship to past years.
Good evening. Each community school has the flexibility to tailor its program offerings to suit the unique needs of its students, leveraging input from partners within the community. This collaborative approach ensures that the enrichment activities provided during out-of-school time and summer target the specific needs and interests of each school site, fostering a more engaging and impactful learning experience for all students. Did I go back? Expanded and enriched learning in community schools in Napa Unified empower students with the skills, knowledge, and experiences they need to thrive academically and personally.
So the pillar of Individualized Integrated Student Supports. The program administrators have taken the lead in supporting their schools to build capacity and building, capacity and strategic integration through the MTSS framework that we currently have across NVUSD. This ensures alignment and coordination of all the programs and services that we have. They focus on the growth of Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three academic, social, emotional, and behavioral interventions in partnership with our community agencies. Post-COVID, all of our school sites across NVUSD have noticed high chronic absenteeism rates. Community schools have focused on restoring trust, building strong connections with individual families, supporting students to connect with their school communities. And as a result of these efforts, we have seen a remarkable improvement, improvement in chronic absenteeism, as you can see in the graph. Across our community schools, we have seen an improvement from 42% chronic absenteeism rate last school year to a decrease currently to 28%. Another improvement that we want to highlight is the increased access to mental health services in partnership with some of our community agencies that we have with us today. Mentis, we have therapists at all of the community school sites, and over 100 students have been, have received mental health services either through individual one-on-one services or as part of a mental health group. Burnett Therapeutic Services is another contract that we have expanded through community schools. This has supported the development and implementation of behavior support plans for over 75 students, and it has also provided teachers with classroom behavior management support. Another one that we want to highlight is the AmeriCorps EXL program that provides mentoring support for students at all of the elementary community school campuses.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to inform you all, next slide, please, to inform you all on the great work that the community and parent liaisons are doing hand-in-hand with our community schools team. We have 17 community and parent liaisons supporting 24 school sites. All of our community and parent liaisons are bilingual and bicultural. They're skilled at connecting all families to social, emotional, and academic supports. Our liaisons support and collaborate with site principals, program administrators, teachers, family resource centers coordinators, and all of our community school sites. This collaboration has become a catalyst for the restructure, realignment, and calibration for the parent engagement work that is taking place at NVUSD. I'm sorry, go back. Okay, thank you. Next slide. I'd like to provide a few data points that represent the areas in which our families need the most assistance in. Parent engagement, over 2,800, and, let me backtrack a bit, excuse me. The parent liaisons enter into Ares every entry that they have, every engagement, every time they participate with a family. And so for August 16, 23, through April 29, 24, we had over 12,000 entries, which means that our families, some of them are duplicated. A family may need to be serviced more than once. But in those categories, and you've heard earlier, attendance and a couple of other pieces that the community schools have focus areas on, those focus areas, parent engagement, attendance support, and basic needs and resources. So for those three categories, they make up more than 60% of the entries that we're inputting into our Ares database. With that, what we can see is that our families need help getting to school. They need help with basic needs, supports, and resources. And they also need assistance in engaging in the day-to-day activities, community building activities as well. Next slide, please. I'd like to provide a few highlights as to the parent education and engagement that took place for this school year. At the district level, parents attended our Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Series, Parents for Racial Equity, a four-week series offered both in American Canyon and Napa. These sessions took place in person. We also had the Rainbow Family League with a duration of seven weeks that was conducted as a hybrid model. Along with that, Fresno State Parent University is our newest parent education tool. This program offers eight-week sessions ranging from digital literacy, socio-emotional learning, conversational English, and pathways to college. Classes are offered in English and Spanish, and most recently Punjabi and Mesteca. Next, thank you. At the school site level, community school site teams carried out the following in conjunction with our parent liaisons: parent education sessions through Coop Family Center in person and facilitated at our NVUSD sites. The team also captured feedback and ideas from families for the strategic plan process at all of our family resource centers. And lastly, our community school teams also engaged parents by creating community through community-building events such as Dia del Niño and Coffee with the Principal. No, I'm sorry, forward. One back, I'm sorry. I don't know if it's jumping slides. Oh, thank you. I think, I'm sorry, I think it jumped the slide. The parent education highlight on the ELAC, the ELAC.
Yep.
Oh, thank you. I'd like to also include a moment to highlight the great learning that took place as we have just concluded the second cohort for ELAC representative training. Twelve school sites were represented with a total of 17 parents attending. Parents learned topics such as how to conduct ELAC meetings, meeting protocols, outreach, and recruitment. Also, the sessions took place for a three-week period on Friday nights, and the trainings were facilitated by the Family and Community Engagement Department for the California Association of Bilingual Educators. Next slide, last slide, and I apologize about the mix-up with the slides. Our family resource centers. It is important to address that all of this work is interconnected and could not happen without our partners as well. We have a mutually beneficial relationship with our family resource centers. The family resource centers not only provide families access to resources and services, but they also partner with our families to create opportunities for learning and advocacy. Thank you.
Sorry, Mickey. So we have a video, a short video, I promise, just providing some highlights of some of the work at the community schools. It's one thing to hear about it, and it's another to see it. So thank you for indulging us.
Well, like we say in our digital media after-school enrichment class.
I want to thank David for putting that video together on very short notice, and I'm going to turn it over to Roxana once again to talk about what's next for community schools.
Okay, so for next school year, some of the things that we want to continue to do is to utilize all the data that we have gathered through the assets and needs assessment and the collaborative structures that we're building at the community schools. We will also continue to leverage the MTSS framework at the community schools to screen, triage, and connect students who need additional wellness, academic, behavioral, and attendance support, and collaborate with community partners to offer these appropriate tier service interventions. Community schools will also continue to cultivate family partnerships, enhance knowledge and skills, and facilitate collaboration between parents and schools to address children's needs. And community schools will continue to build capacity for sustainable structures of support for all students.
There we go. Okay, that concludes our presentation, and we have opportunity for any questions and discussion.
Great. Thank you very much. First, I'm going to ask if we have any public comments on this.
There are no public comments on this item.
Thank you, sir. Okay, board. Okay, Trustee Gracia.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. The first was, you mentioned that the community school process is really elevating student voice. I was wondering what that looks like, and if you could give us some examples of how the results of that elevated student voice are being incorporated.
Thank you for that question. I'm going to turn it over to some of our program administrators who are leading that work at the site.
Thank you for your question. So I'm Melissa Phillips from Snow Elementary School. Prior to this year, there was no student advisory team at all. This year, we have a student advisory team of 14 students. We have our community school advisory team where we meet together, and we have had two representatives, students on that advisory team. The two highlights of the entire community school advisory team was when we had those two students there. We were looking at the data for Anna, and we had the student who was, she's a fifth grader, and she was looking at the student data, and she was working with our parent liaison, and she was looking at what the students were saying. She was writing down the notes and representing the student voice. And it was just really empowering to see her engage and saying, yeah, we do need this, and yes, the school would be better if we had more after-school intervention for our multilingual learners, because that LPAC test is so hard. And then we had, the next meeting, we had a different student who was also on the student advisory team to kind of give them all a chance to empower their leadership. And unplanned, we paused and we asked her, what is the hardest part about CASP? Where do you think students need support? And she went on about the writing and how the And she went on about the writing and how the writing is so hard and how they need more help in writing. Prior to community schools in this, we wouldn't have had that elevated. And we ended up targeting one of our, with our ELAF partner. We are doing our intervention where we're focusing on CASP, and we're focusing on writing prior to our intervention classes. So without that student voice, Snow wouldn't have had that. So that's one way.
Cool. Okay. And then I had another question. You guys mentioned that we're focused on community engagement and participation. So as far as that goes, what about the ELAC and parent club meetings at our community schools? Have we seen attendance go up, down, stay the same? I'd like to hear more about that.
Yeah, so we have definitely seen an increase in participation. And for the specifics of that, I'll turn it over to Jessica. Do you want to talk about Phillips?
Sure, I mean, I think.
Yeah, come up here so they can hear you. And then Roxana, you can speak to some of the other sites too. And I don't know, Viviana, if you want to address it as well.
So coming into this school year, we did not have, so in regards to like our parent and faculty club, our PFC, we didn't really have a strongly established leadership team. It was like two parents that kind of volunteered at the beginning. And we just, we saw it grow throughout the year. In our last meeting, we had about 14 parents there. And we were able to elect officers for the next year, like a full, like we have officers. It's not just the one or two parents that kind of can contribute. So we definitely saw an increase there. And with our ELAC meetings, we had an average, so it doesn't sound very like big numbers, but we went, we increased 50%. Last year, we had about an average of about four attending. And this year, it went up to eight, which doesn't sound like a lot, but it's a 50% increase. And we hope, that is one of our goals for next year, to increase both, you know, the capacity for parents to be more involved and make it meaningful to them. And so that is definitely one of our goals. That was, it was determined within the Needs and Assets Assessment. And I just want to go back to that first question that you had, trustee Gracia. The, you know, we can identify needs and asset, or assets and needs of our school, but that's very general. And so to be able to really hone in on just students, what are their assets? What are their needs? What are they saying? What are teachers saying, or staff? And then what are our parents saying? So I think our sites were able to do that, and that's been very powerful. And then presenting it to them, and they're like, yeah, that makes sense, that, you know. And so it's been a very powerful experience this year. And I just, I'm excited to see it continue to grow, because, you know, we're starting. This is, for us, the beginning, and we are excited to see it grow.
I can speak to Delac. We have had an increase in participation this year as far as our Delac meetings. Along with that, we've had a lot of interest in parent education. And so what we're doing is not only are we going to continue to do the representative training that we offer through the CAPE, through the California Association of Bilingual Educators, but we're also going to go deeper and offer a series of classes that we can not only train our parents, but we will be training our administrators, our parent liaisons, and our program administrators as well as a community schools team for the schools that have community schools. But as a whole, in the work of restructuring, aligning, so that work is more calibrated, right? So I can speak to that for you. Thank you.
And then lastly, just at the secondary level, I want to give a shout out. You know, it's sometimes difficult, having been a high school English teacher myself, to engage parents at the secondary level. And I want to give a shout out to David and Principal Valerga and Principal Sisneros for their efforts. At Silverado Middle School, they've seen a 15% increase with about an average of 28 parents attending their meetings. And then at Valley Oak, they've seen an increase with 34 parents actively participating in their ELAC meetings, which is huge for secondary schools. So, and a lot of that has been achieved through grassroots, you know, phone calling, you know, talking to parents in the parking lot, flyers, things of that nature, which it really takes a concentrated effort, like what the program administrator is doing, to be able to increase that engagement. So thank you for that question.
I have an observation. The criteria that you use to assess this work, to meet the benchmarks of the funding, it seems to me are the criteria that need to be applied to every site. I mean, you have given real specificity around your approach and what you wanted, the why you want to get it accomplished, and now the how you want to get it accomplished. But if you look at it in the bigger picture sense, we would want these same things for every single site. So this is almost a pilot, if you will, to see what you're doing, what is successful, and how can you modify that application to fit, you know, the different schools and different needs? So you're doing groundbreaking work, so thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Gonzalez-Morris.
Yeah, my main comment, I mean, obviously, all of it is fantastic work. So thank you so much for all the collaboration. Sorry, allergies are really kicking in. I'm having a hard time with that. Yeah, so, so just really, I really commend the tremendous amount of work that this all takes. That it's just represented in 26 slides, but we know it's beyond that. And just want to congratulate you on that significant decrease on chronic absenteeism, because that's something that is still an area that we're working on since the pandemic. And it's really hard to teach kiddos if they're not in the classroom. And so we know there's a whole abundance array of issues as to why that is happening. So that is a tremendous, so just seeing that, that drop is huge. And we've seen examples of that shared by Valley Oak, which is connected to this. So it just makes a lot of sense. And I agree with trustee Jankoic's side. It's just something that all of our sites need. Sorry to hear that that grant didn't get through with Napa High, but we're going to keep going. And so I did have a question, because I think this is fascinating. Viviana, this was your slide on the parent support with the pie chart. And there was one that says data confirmation. And so I just wanted to understand what that, what does data confirmation mean?
Peter.
Just because I know there's attendance and enrollment. I mean, there's so much that, of course, is happening here. But talking about pilot and research and data, it's like there's just some amazing information here. So I was just curious what that meant.
It's literally helping their families do data confirmation so that we're able to have everything from their emergency information to, and it's everything from literally sitting with them in the computer, calling them, the grassroots outreach, all of that. But it's to make sure that we have everything that we need electronically to make sure that if there's an emergency, we're able to reach your child. And during the time, also educating them on the importance of it. Peter, would you like to?
I do love data confirmation. Yeah, so the process itself is so critical for getting important information about families and collecting the income information, which we use to calculate our unduplicated count, which has actually gone up about 12% in the last few years. I won't put a dollar figure on that, because I don't want to upset anybody. But it's a lot of money, and so the work that Viviana does with the parent liaisons to support families, helping them go through that process, is incredible and really contributes to that work. And our completion rate for data confirmation this last year was 98 point something percent, so almost 99%. Very, very few families did not do it. It was very incredible, and we could not have done that without the work of our parent liaison. So thank you. Absolutely. Yeah, definitely. So thank you, parent liaisons.
Yeah, thank you so much.
I just have a really brief comment. As a former attendee of Shear many years ago, it's exciting for me personally to see the schools that have the highest percentage of need in our community be able to get this additional funding and attention. I visited McPherson and Phillips last week, and I was, I believe it was at McPherson, I was asking about his unduplicated percentage, and it was something like 97%, which just blew my mind, you know, in that sense. I know we have a pretty good percentage in our district, but that was the highest I've heard so far. So it's encouraging to see the additional attention and funding and focus on helping out those kids, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. This is very informative. It's great. And good job on that chronic truancy. Now we're moving to K action items. Number one, General Services. A, Adoption of California School Board Associations. Recommended Policy Updates, March 2024.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, first by Gracia, second by Hart. Do we have any public comments on this?
There is no public comment on this item.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Okay, passes unanimously. Two, Business Services. A, Audiovisual Upgrades for New Technology High School Cyber Cafe.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Hart. Do we have any public comments?
There is no public comment on this item.
No public comments. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Instructional, three, Instructional Services. A, Supplementary English Language Development Instructional Material Adoption for Elementary Schools.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Hart. Do we have any public comment?
There is no public comment on this item.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. B, Supplementary Health Instructional Material Adoption for Elementary, Middle, and High Schools.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Hart. Do we have any public comment?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay, great. And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. C, Core English Language Development Instructional Material Adoption for Secondary Schools.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by Gracia, second by Hart. Do we have any public comment?
There is no public comment on this item.
No public comment. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. ESGI Software License Quote.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Hart. Do we have any public comment?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. Memorandum of Understanding with Outreach and Technical Assistance Network.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Hart. Do we have any public comments?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay, and all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Four, Operational Services Interagency Agreement. A, Interagency Agreement with the Boys and Girls Club of Napa.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Hart. Do we have any public comments?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. B, Award of Contract Two, Tasty Indian Pizza.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Hart. Do we have any public comments?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Five, School Planning Instruction. A, SBC 16.52-17 Contract for District-Wide Fencing Project Phase Four.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have public comments? We do have public comments, yes. I see some public commenters in the room. And do we have any public comments? You can come on up.
Come inside, yeah.
Does that work? Yep, that works. Okay, so, good evening. As a parent of three children attending West Park Elementary.
Okay, excuse me, could you give us your name, please?
Sure, first name Dave, last name Latona.
Got it, right here. Okay, thank you.
All right. Good evening. As a parent of three children attending West Park Elementary, a staunch advocate of school funding, I was informed of the recent fencing project days prior to the previous board meeting, which the project award was initially slated for approval. With my 25 years of engineering background, I found during my review of the plans, points of concern, namely the fencing along the front of the school with limited egress. Plans indicate maintenance gate that will be locked and two three-foot access gates for egress. If the rear of the building required emergency exit through the front of the school, the two gates within the confined space seem inadequate. I requested the concern be brought up, be brought to the designer and DSA to confirm either the current design is adequate or to inform what changes will be made, such as a possible third gate in lieu of the maintenance gate. Another issue brought to NVUSD was the community request that the eight-foot fence with one-inch mesh to be reduced to a six-foot fence with 1.1 and 1/2 inch mesh or greater, which other schools have. The change would increase visibility. Speaking personally to over 100 parents, they were very concerned with the prison-like environment. The eight-foot fence would, that the eight-foot fence would create. Some parents voiced concerns with their children who have recently experienced anxiety issues due to the recent COVID lockdowns. Our children have already endured enough through COVID. Let's not exacerbate this. The last item is regarding the funding as stated. I, as well as family and friends, regularly vote in favor for school measures. Looking at the plans and seeing that the funding is going to replace existing gates that were replaced in recent years, removing the fence with new in-kind fencing is not acceptable. It's not cost-conscious nor green. There is the opportunity here for cost deduct changes to our safety funding, which we would like to see be applied to issues such as the multi-use building leaking roof that we've had to deal with with the last couple seasons, where drips and nearly small streams present during assemblies. Not addressing these reasonable community requests will put future funding in jeopardy. I would like to thank the district superintendent for providing the recent confirmation of the removal of the new fence, field fence, that was initially proposed in the design drawings. Thank you for your time, and I ask that these, that action items be crafted during this meeting and addressed prior to the award and construction of the West Park Fence Project.
Thank you.
I had two seconds, good.
Yeah. Is it Brina Green?
We can't actually address this.
Okay.
Yeah.
Hello? My name is Brina Green. I'm the mother of a, excuse me, student at West Park. And I wanted to show up tonight, even though we did receive confirmation that the field fence would not be installed. And so I appreciate all of your work, to both of you, for listening to us at the meetings. And I appreciate the other considerations that Dave Latona also brought up. As I'm sure you can all imagine, the safety of our students and our children that we leave at the school is priority number one. So, again, thank you.
Thank you. And is it Jolene Satian?
Yeah, I don't need to speak. He said it also.
Okay, he did. Thank you. All right. Do we have any online comments?
There are no online public comments on this item.
Okay, there was a first by trustee Gracia, a second by trustee Hart. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No, okay, so it passes unanimously. Thank you. We are going to SPC 18.105-20 Contract for Canyon Oaks Outdoor Learning Area.
Move to approve.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by trustee Gracia, second by trustee, trustee Chu. All, do we have any public comments?
There are no public comments on this item.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No, so it's unanimous. C, SPC 18.106-20 Contract for Roof Replacement.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Hart. Do we have any comments online?
There are no public comments on this item.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. D, SPC 18.107-20 Amended Lease Agreement for District-Wide TK Classroom Modernization. for district-wide TK classroom modernizations.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Hart. Do we have any comments online?
There are no public comments on this item.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, it passes unanimously. Okay, thanks. Okay, for informational, general services. I don't think there's anything attached. Nope, none of them have reports this time. Two, business services. We have a quarterly investment report as of March thirty-first, 2024. Thank you. And do we have any public comment on that?
There is no public comment on that item.
Great, thank you. And additional suggestions and comments from board members and superintendent? Well, I have one. You should know that Vichy and Stonebridge won the top recycling awards for the school district. And anything, anyone else? Nope, and future agenda items?
Yes, I was particularly interested in the public comment that we received from the students at Alitos Middle School. So, I would like to see in the future an examination of the books that are available in their library and whether or not we can make some purchases to supplement the books available there. So, I would like to see that investigated.
I would second that.
Okay, and I support, I think we all support that, so.
And I believe there's been a request submitted to the superintendent.
Yep, an example of elevating student voice, right here. Okay, and next, I need a motion for adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
All in, okay, first by trustee-- excuse me, president emeritus Gracia and trustee-- was that trustee Hart, second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous, good night.